No, I didn't.
Don, we're gonna start the meeting.
Thanks.
Sorry, we're not gonna wait for DW because he's gonna be, he's late, he said if you wanna start.
Yeah.
And then he can take over when he gets here. So I'd like to call this County of Allen Haven Select Board Meeting Order for Tuesday, March twenty eighth, twenty twenty three. And.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have seven D ambulance in addition for committee and department reports and appointments. Thank you.
Is that a motion?
Um, that would be a motion. Do I have a second?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Sorry. All right, um. Present is Leslie Dyer, Dawn Young, myself, Deputy Town Clerk Elizabeth Funker, Town Manager Marjorie Stratten, Donald Poole is running late and not sure.
I think Jake's on his way, but I don't, I don't know if he's on island.
Okay, Jake's still off island. We have a motion to approve the agenda.
We did that.
Oh, we just said that would be addition. Thank you. Yes, you did, no, that's fine. Anytime. Um, approved minutes from the March seventh, twenty twenty three special town meeting and Board of Slotton meetings.
So moved.
Second, all in favor. Approved signed treasures warrants number thirty nine. So moved.
Second.
All in favor. Communications.
You have, um, there's one letter from Ellen.
I don't know if you wanna bring that up now or under that, um, you. Uh, DW asked for the land use violation to be back on the agenda because of the correspondence. So I'm, I don't know how you wanna play it.
Um, would you repeat? I'm sorry, I was looking for this. Are you talking about this here?
So he had, he received that correspondence and then he emailed me and said that he wanted the land use violation back on the agenda. So it's on the agenda, but I don't know, um, what comes first, the chicken or the egg?
Well, not knowing which does come first, I would suggest that, um, that that's under number eight old business. I think Fay's not here. She's off island, right?
I don't have any idea what the purpose of the agenda item is.
I.
DW asked me to put it on there.
Here he comes. I was gonna, I was gonna suggest that we postpone that until she gets back on island.
I don't know. I, I think it's more a question of, because I don't know the readers.
Sorry, I'm late.
That's okay. We're discussing, um, this here.
Mm-hmm.
And I just suggested that we move it to when Fay gets back from vacation. Because this is more her.
He's not.
She won't be back until the weekend.
Okay, that, that's fine. I mean, she should be here.
Um, I agree.
Okay. And so we're just on the agenda.
We're down here.
We are down here.
Communication. We're on number six.
All right. All right. Uh, all right, speakers from the floor. Once, going twice, all right. Seven, committee and department reports and appointments. Seven, A, what is your current status report?
So this, uh, report from Woodard and Curran is dated March twenty four. Um. So we're still working on the easements for the EDA portion of the project. Um, the transfer station project has begun, um, and I do have some comments about what's going on there. Uh, let's see, some mineral, we're working on the, um, NBRC grant in terms of, um, looking at the preliminary design and the permitting. We're still working with them, uh, for their requirements. Um. Brent is still working on the operations and maintenance manual for the transfer station. Um. But maybe I'll just wait until my report. I wrote up a memo on things that are happening at the transfer station uh, under reporter's term manager. Because there are some things going on there. Wanna just, you have any questions about, uh, Woodard and Curran's report?
Nope.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, move on to seven V Knox County Deputy's report.
Three.
These three correct? All right.
Josh, uh, Lemoy is here if you'd like to ask questions.
I've heard your name tossed around frequently. First time I've met you. Hi.
Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for having us. Uh, you'll see the three sheets. It was a little bit off. Getting ready on this one. There's a little difference between the two. We were trying to do this in February when we have originally met again, where I mentioned February with budget meetings. That's why they're such a lag.
Yep.
The first one, which has the initial rundown of all the sheets, which is February, on the top left, it's dated three, six.
Yeah.
Those are the February sheets. Um, second one, which has three twenty seven, obviously was run yesterday. Kind of changed the format a little bit, and I figured it would be beneficial to you as board members that you can see the deputies, just so you have a different idea. That's not just one person out here or whatever. Um. For the two months, we've had a total of seventy calls on island. Which is, you look at it, seventy calls, it's not necessarily seventy calls. It's seventy things that we've put into service out here, whether that be public relations, which could be going down to the friend and having a cup of coffee, just so people see us, or the school visits, anything to that case. So if you look at the numbers, you're like, your board, that's a lot. Is it? It's, it's more of, we're showing the flag, we're here. Um, you'll see through those civil paper that's essentially paperwork from the court systems that we deliver to people. It's part of our jobs. Could be divorce paper, could be a bank problem, could be anything. Um, property checks, we do a fair amount of those. Administrative is truly a blanket call, if you will. I'll draw an administrative number just and put in a report that I was here tonight, attended the meeting. Um. I think the other things are fairly self-explanatory. PD accident is a property damage information that doesn't need an explanation. Um, school visits, we've been doing a fair amount of those, working with the principal and the assistant principal. School did a lockdown drill two and a half weeks ago. I couldn't make it because that was that afternoon of the freak snowstorm, and I had talked to Brian and Chris versus game that come over here wasn't optimal. Uh, but we are working with the school on lockdown drills. We talk to them frequently. I do personally, Brian and Monty both have one number of all Pakistan issues, love this school. Uh, so those are some things that we've been doing, um, some things that we're kind of pushing on the up and up. Is, uh, I've worked with the main warden service. I know it's been done in the past, but it hasn't been done by the wardens, in my belief, six years. So I have a hunter safety course coming out to the island. Uh, we're gonna have two wardens come out, and this will certify anyone's in the age of ten to one hundred, if you will. They can come and take the course, it's a two day course, and they get hunter certified. Um, if I see enough interest, I'll try to pull the wardens back in the fall and do a bow and arrow course, and a crossbow course, which are all required. Um, yes, some of this stuff can be done online, but for the children, it has to be done in person. So we had an incident this fall, as I'm sure most have heard. That's kind of what provoked me to push this. So here we are. Um, they're gonna be coming, we said the weekend of the fifteenth of April. Really, the only date that I had, um, I tried to do it to save the state and say county, whoever. So they're gonna be staying at the townhouse up on Pleasant Street. So that kind of mitigates some costs and kind of helps to pushing things along. So they're coming, um, we'll have some works. School lockdowns, everybody's familiar with the national shooting yesterday. Then you know the hot topic, there's gonna be a lot of concerns. Do the best that we can. Um. Last but not least, that I have for the board. I put it on both of the town's Facebook page. For those that don't know me, I am the North Haven person. Um. I like Facebook for knowledge and information. I will not respond to a complaint through Facebook. I does not hold myself accountable. If I'm doing yard project, I don't hear my phone go off. It's been late. Um, I put it on both the final even public poster and the two point O this weekend saying, call Knox County. That is the best way to keep things on track. I think it does everybody a benefit. It doesn't just pin one deputy or whatever. I need to be held accountable and somebody to say, well, I told Josh I didn't get it until the next day or whatever. So we're stressing that, um, please call Knox County. It's emergency, obviously, nine oh one. It's something that concerns the public. Please call. We.
It sucks.
Agreed. I hope everyone that is watching or watches later understands social media, whatever it may be, is not the proper way to report an incident, to contact the deputy on call, whatever it may be. You have an issue, call Knox County Sheriff's Department, please. Okay? That is the way to report it. So it goes to the proper channels. Social media is not the way to do it. Or personal phone calls.
Correct. There, there needs to be accountability all the way.
Yep.
I get island living and, well, he's right here. I'll just go to his house. That is not, it's not okay. You don't do that in New York. You wouldn't do it.
Exactly.
You know, there, there needs to be accountable to the officer and, you know, to get the best service that the island deserves.
Yep.
I think that is the way to go.
Yeah. That's good to, to put out there so everybody is aware. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Nice question. Do you know if there's any updates on, on new hires?
I have not. I have not heard anything since our last meeting that was concrete, but I'm not high on the total.
It's okay.
Sometimes it's a good thing.
Did you have a question in the moment?
Well, I was gonna ask anything on housing, but I guess probably they haven't discussed that much either.
No, we haven't. I don't know where we're at. I think when we all spoke the last time that they were one of the gentlemen from a lot of state looking to come up to checking his credentials against the state. I don't know
Yeah.
where that fell out and how the process went. I will reach out this week and try to get some answers. I can let Marjorie know, email it, however it works.
I did a little bit of checking, and there's a possibility that there are some government grants related to law enforcement that we may be eligible for for housing. So I wanna pursue that a little further.
Yep, makes sense. I just have one question. On the property checks, are those, that's when someone calls Knox County and asks, you know, check on property, or is it?
It's, are, uh, self-induced by us, if you will. Also, we'll stop down the thoroughfare, they'll check cars down there, make sure there's no damage. They'll go through different properties, uh. The other night, one of the gentleman that was out here had gone to the school, and the school was open, it was like eight fifty.
Mm-hmm.
School's on break, blah, blah, blah. I called Brian, who was in California. Brian said, oh, it's open gym night, they're in there playing volleyball. They kept telling not. So it's just stuff that we'll go around, go to the medical center, make sure all the doors are locked. Stuff to that nature, just to make sure.
Okay. Um, any other questions?
No, I'm switching this chair out.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for having me.
Nice to meet you.
Bill will, I thought.
Hey.
Very.
Yes. I mean, I know he's on North Haven a long time, but it's nice enough. I mean, he's out here as well.
Yeah, no, I think we should try to do that once a month. Do you? Think it would be a good idea?
Yeah, I can breathe.
Does that work?
Yep.
What was the reason? I miss that. You know.
Was the plan.
Yeah.
All right, seven C Housing Committee.
Hi.
Hello.
I gave you a letter last time I was at a selectman's meeting from Jason.
Yep.
And I think he's wondering if you'd like to have a conversation with him.
Yep.
So I thought perhaps you might be discussing that tonight, so I came and came in some way. I couldn't answer any questions or relay, I mean, some concerns you might have. Also, I'd like to just give you an update that, um, the housing committee is gonna be meeting on Sunday. With Merrick Carey, she is, has a for-profit organization on the mainland for workforce housing. She's a dynamo. She's an attorney, and, um, she's gonna come out and give us some advice, not that we're trying to create for profit, but she has a lot of information. She has a special license as a developer to buy, um, manufactured housing at cost without going through a third party. So that, if we could get her help, maybe we can partner with her in some fashion. I don't know. And also, she's bringing Tia Anderson from Habitat for Humanity.
Okay.
So we might learn from her too. We're, we're trying everything. I talked to Mark Fimo today, who was development at Genesis. He said there's still some money for islands, and he's wondering, you know, could we get it together and apply?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think we should leave any stone unturned. Um, in about the net factory, though, I think we should try to find a time where we can have a community meeting and ask folks what they think should be done with that particular piece of property, assuming that we, the town is able to secure rights to it, which I don't think will be an issue. Um. Because we should find out what community wants to do with it before we make any movements on housing or whatever it may be. So I don't know. I have the rest of the board deals.
What is the planning, uh, group going with the downstream planning and does that tie in at all?
It's in the master plan.
It's in the master plan.
For to form a I can't remember what they called it, a committee to, uh, look at the net factory structure and talk about what the community uh, needs are and
Right.
what we should do with that property.
But there's nothing in the mass, the downtime master plan about specifically.
What to do with it?
What to build.
No, it just suggests.
Right.
Forming that, uh, group.
Right.
Um, I think what needs to be done is, I mean, we have some policies in place about forming committees. So there needs to be a document, um, that lays out what the purpose of the group will be and, you know, possibly, you know, what, um, I don't know how to say that. Um. You know, maybe a more targeted approach to who we place on this committee, you know, to try to bring in people from all areas of the community, um, not just, you know, not just the idea of whoever shows up. I, you know, I think that it would be good to try to bring in, um, different voices from different, uh, parts of the community to get some real, really good input, uh, and, uh, um, you know, and, and of course, uh, schedule some uh, open, you know, community meetings, um, to see what we wanna do with that. But I think that it's important to have a forming document about what this committee is, what your goals are, you know, from the selectmen, you know, you need to say what it is that you want to come out of this committee and put some, you know, is this a probably be an ad hoc committee. It wouldn't be a permanent
Mm-hmm.
committee to the town. And, you know, with some sort of timeline about what, what you want them to accomplish and what sort of timeline. I mean, that's what I envision anyway. It's not really up to me, but there, um, I think I was you know, and when I came, I tried to do some research on what had been done in the past several years, and there is some documentation about forming committees and how that should be done and, um, you know, that it should be more of a process. So I think we should try to follow those guidelines. Anyway, those are my thoughts anyway.
So I think some of, when I'm here from the Housing Committee is time is of the essence, so performing another committee to then go out and find out what the town wants.
Well, just for that one property.
Right, but it, would it make sense at this point to just have a town community gathering, meeting, whatever you wanna call it, just to get input on what people's ideas are for the property?
Well, that's certainly up to the board. You can do that.
I feel like that would be.
I think it's a good idea, but I think before we do that, we ought to understand what restrictions may be in place, so we don't go off on a tangent.
What restrictions?
Flood plane. You know, you're certainly gonna be limited to what you can do there.
Yeah, I think you said in the last meeting that the first floor would not be housing, it would have to be something else because of the flood.
Taken all that into consideration. There's, there's no restriction as long as there's no residential use on the first floor. But really, it's a question of whether the community wants to see housing there, or they have some other vision. And if the community's not interested, then we'll have to find some other ways of providing housing. But frankly, this is the best option. In the two years we've been doing research and studying and talking to every conceivable person to create housing for, for more people in this community than we can possibly do without actually costing this town any money.
I am very concerned about parking though, for if we do that, because parking is extremely tight on Main Street, period. If we put housing in that spot, it's not gonna get any better. I know you're gonna say you have a garage underneath, but I'm, you know, that's part of what we need to be concerned about.
I think at this point, though, having the meeting to find out what the overall sense is, what people wanna do with the spot, I think can't hurt. And then if we need to form a committee after that, to look into if it's one or two ideas that have the majority's opinion, then we look into the, the committee looks into those two ideas. No. Um. Because if we are going for state and federal funding, there's a whole process around that, and as soon you started the more I'm prepared to get the funding, so. Um.
Do you want, um, do you want a facilitator for this meeting? I mean, I found that it's good to, if you're going to have a community meeting with something like that, that it's good to have a facilitator to direct the conversation.
Yep. I, I, yes, that, I agree. I hadn't thought of that, but I was thinking more, where would we hold it? Um, and of course the like that at the school where they have employees, what is that? The auto, the school will be the place to have it. Thank you. Um. So I would assume we'd have to reach out to the school and find out when that would be available. Obviously, it would have been nice to do it last week or this week, because there is no school, but, um. So that, those are my thoughts on it. I think the sooner we have it, the better. You have a better idea of what people would like to see happen in that space. And then when we have a couple ideas, then we can look more selectively focusing on those things and find out what we can and cannot do. Think about the things, like you mentioned, parking, whatever else it may be, so. Yeah.
Might consider soliciting, uh, suggestions in the wind.
Yep.
If there was a way people could
think about it.
Make a, have a voice without, if they can't make it to the meeting or whatever.
Right.
Did you want to respond to the letter?
Yeah.
Yeah, I have a copy in my pocket.
Wow. Nope.
So I've been at some last year.
Oh, is it this? No. Oh, it's a new, different one, a little letter than the last week's. Oh. My three last, whatever, my.
Yeah, it probably wouldn't hurt to meet with Jason as well, to see what his plan is, because he unless he thinks that we can there's an agreement that meets everyone needs, the approach to give the waters to kind of needs to retain the office space and to use the size of lay down yard. I don't know. I don't wanna waste his time either. Like if we meet with him and then all of a sudden the community's like, we don't want housing there. Well, I don't wanna waste his time either, so.
Do you think there's any benefit in him coming to the meeting?
No, I don't. I think that would be, I think we need to let the town have their voice and then follow up afterwards. My opinion.
Yeah, I, I guess I'm more just on, let's have the meeting with the community, see what is wanted, build from there. Yeah, that's kind of how I feel about it.
Uh, one thing we might wanna do ahead of, before that time is reach a consensus that that building is not viable, that has, has to come down. So get that behind us before the meeting. I'll argue for them that it isn't one way or the other.
Well.
Because that would be.
There's already been a report by Gartley and Doris Gate for uh, what do you call it, a structural, structural assessment?
Yep.
That was already done. I don't, um. I could get you a copy of that.
Okay, if you would, please.
When was that?
I believe there's actually parts of the building that are no la, you're not allowed to go in anymore, third floor and a few other locations from that report.
Yeah, I'd be surprised if much of any of that building can be.
I just think we ought to be clear upfront, so we don't have a lot of suggestions revolving around that building. We can't use it.
Yep. No, that makes sense.
It's not likely to be an option.
Right.
Yeah, it would be.
That was already determined with the report. I think that's one of the reasons why the town crew moved up there was because that building wasn't salvageable, right?
Well, not really. It was more that we felt that we would be in a better position to put it up, move it up to where it is because of
space.
the amount of money that it would cost to try to renovate that into the town garage, but also it was it was just a better choice, we felt.
The vehicle traffic in and out of there, all the big machinery would have been.
And the amount of money that it costs to redo that property up there to benefit the town crew or for the town garage, not benefit, but you know, to move it up there would was not that much more expensive, a couple hundred thousand dollars easily said, than it was to fix up. You know, and out there, at least we have something new, and we've got the salt shed.
It's a dedicated space for that particular, yeah.
Thank you. That's a good way to put it. But anyway, I have no idea what the report would be on that building down there. At the time that they did the uh, Marty Stein did the whole, you know, did the whole thing. And that was the recommended place at the time until this other option opened up for us. I mean, two thousand fifteen is quite a while ago for
Well, it hasn't gotten any better since then, so.
I can't believe that. I mean, that's nine years, eight years.
The main one.
Anyway. I'm, I'm not in disagreement to have people have it discussed with the
Yeah, I agree.
with everybody that wants to talk about it. I do hesitate to turn it over to that it would no longer be Vile Haven Town property. If it went to Penquess, is that my understanding?
I think that was something you'd have to discuss with Jason. He said they would prefer to own it, because they'd be in charge of it for sixty years at least, you know?
So I
I think leasing is an option. I think we really have to talk to them and see, you know, they'd be investing millions of dollars.
Right.
They'd have to decide whether it was worth it to them on a lease basis.
So I think there's a lot to discuss.
Would the town wanna own, you know, a residential building like that and maintain?
I mean, there is a lot of things to talk about before we no, anybody makes any final decisions. Anybody makes any final decisions.
Yeah.
Uh, and I think the townspeople have a. Need to have a voice before.
Exactly, I think there have been. Different thoughts of what could go there. And what is needed, so I think it makes sense to have the input. And then if we need to, we can then form a committee that's looking to do it specifically and go from there, so.
So essentially then meeting and then possibly meeting with these guys to follow up and see what their. Ops, what their thoughts are.
Yeah.
And we go from there.
Yep, I think that's. I think that's the direction we should take.
We appreciate it very much.
Well, we appreciate all your work.
Thank you.
Yeah, you do, certainly. Get right in there.
Pretty much a full time job.
And then no, we the answer to it, no. And that's real.
All right, we'll move on to seven D ambulance reports.
There's several things that we'd like to um talk about, Ryan has uh some reports that he put in um. To your packet. But I also wanted to touch on um. A proposal, you know, before you um. Enter into the discussions about your things, I just wanted to briefly talk about this North Haven proposal. To um. At first, what you would say. Is they're they're interested in contracting with Vinyl Haven to have Ryan serve as their EMS director as well. And. We've looked at this proposal and some of the things that Ryan would do. Concern policy and oversight. OSHA compliance. What is QA?
帮你确认, so reviewing all of. The things that they do and ensuring that they're operating within that that practice, even with info and all. Uh, that kind of thing.
Training, their service licensing. And other administrative duties. Now. The proposal that they talked about, talked about kind of, you know, him keeping track of his hours and that he was working for the North Haven and. We didn't really think that that would work. You know, so. If. If you even wanna discuss it, we, Ryan and I think that it would be better to just have some sort of stipend. That North Haven would contribute. Uh, to us, I mean, we would still have um. Ryan as an employee and we would be paying him and all of his benefits. But they would just contribute a certain stipend. Um, maybe Ryan wants to speak to it a little bit to say, you know, whether or not.
Yeah, um. Yeah, the what they do right there right now is they have uh kind of three key people that sort of divvy up all the tasks that I do here. Um, they all have full time regular employment that they sort of work with right now, and it's kind of a lot for them to juggle between. All of them, um, I think they're really just interested in having someone to kind of manage their oversight, help them deal with. Things relating to QA training and stuff like that, it's it's a lot of work to build a training plan and have it be comprehensive and actually meet state standards. Uh, and then. Reviewing runs and things like that, working with their medical control, that also takes a lot of time to sit down and. Review all the things that were done and said on scene and that kind of things, a lot of work goes into that and that's. What I do here. Martin and I were kind of talking that what they would ask of me to do is really not. Much more time than I already do here, a lot of that work can be done concurrently. Uh, so taking some of those responsibilities away from them uh isn't really.
What we talked about was about three or four hours a week, is that?
Yeah, kind of ballparking.
I guess what we what we need to know now is if you're even interested in. Coordinating that kind of. Work and allowing Ryan, you know, to work with North Haven. I think it's good, I mean. We've, you know, been trying to coordinate with North Haven and do. You know, collaborate more with them on things, cuz it just makes sense, but certainly, I don't, we don't wanna continue to. Negotiate, if you will, with. Uh, Rick Latimer and the North Haven Board if. You're just not interested in all, and cer- certainly, we would. Um, have a memorandum of understanding. You know, that we would present. After. You know. We decide what is what we think would be good. For Ryan and for our department and their department, so this isn't like an end all. You know, you're just, you're, I guess what I'm looking for. Yeah, like, should we continue negotiating or? Should we not, you know, do you think this is a good idea, a bad idea, and?
It certainly must seem like a good idea, but the real question I would have, Brian, what is your timeframe? Can you fit this in, is it gonna take away? Or not?
No, no, I. Uh, like I said, I think we kind of ballpark maybe three or four hours, you know, forty hour week would be North Haven specific stuff. Um, pretty much the rest of my time, a lot of the work that I do now can kind of run concurrently with. Stuff that I would do for North Haven. Uh, like training plan, for example, I'd like to get a lot more, we already have done a few um concurrent trainings, um, I was going over there, then coming over here.
Yeah, we've been doing that for years, doing trainings with North Haven.
Building that stuff, making sure that it's tracked properly and it's. Good for both services and really a. Increase to my workload, it's just kind of. Helping them out and maybe. Making our partnerships with our closest mutual aid a little. A little more firm.
And I if it's not gonna take away from your duties here, you can you can take on the additional work and the compensation is fair, I I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah.
How would you propose to handle the monetary with by the hour uh or how?
Well, that was the the North Haven proposal was more of a, you know, North Haven to pay Vinyl Haven an hourly fee for Ryan's service. But as we discussed it, that would mean that Ryan on his timesheet, if you will, would have to. Separate out, you know, what we would bill to North Haven and what, you know, so we kind of rejected that proposal. And we're thinking more of a stipend, you know, to say, okay. If he's gonna be working three or four hours a week, try to figure out based on what we're paying him, what we would ask. Uh, from North Haven, and this is the beginnings of our discussions with. Uh, Rick Latimer, the town administrator and and the North Haven Board, so we're not. You know, we don't have a even a proposed memorandum of understanding yet, you know, that's been finalized, I guess, as I said. My point here is to just say, you know, should we continue to negotiate, or do you think this is a bad idea?
I have an idea by me, I don't I don't think any.
So with the um. The memorandum of understanding, is that? Something that you would write up? And then show up?
Oh, yeah, you would have to agree.
Okay, because I'm, I would like to make certain that that is very specific on how many hours a week that Ryan would. Do, because we don't need you to get burned out.
Right.
No way, are we gonna share you with another?
Many years left.
I know.
I was just gonna say, you say that.
I just, not to say I don't, that I would not approve of. You know, get keeping the work up with our neighbors, but. I'm not gonna put you in jeopardy of losing you.
Right, so as soon as it becomes an issue where it's becoming too much. For you to handle both duties.
So what you're saying is you would want something in the understanding to say, yeah.
Yeah.
We, we kind of discussed a little bit, uh, me and Marjorie at least, that this would be kind of, you know, six month increment sort of things.
Yeah.
If at any point either party decided that, you know, we're just not getting what we want out of this, or we're getting too much out of this, you know, it would be a, okay, let's.
Because you know how busy summer is.
Yeah.
Um, but in that MOU, it would be. Specific as to what. He would be, what you would be doing, yeah. I would, I mean, I would wanna see that before I.
Oh, yeah, definitely, yeah, we're not.
But yeah, so at this point.
Continue.
Continue negotiations when you have more to report back to us, if there's something that we need to review before signing, then we'll do that, but yeah.
Okay.
But I would consider. And suggestion that you look look at retaining a retainer type arrangement with so many hours allocated within that retainer and that. To the starting point. It's easy to manage.
The stipend thing is.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Make sure it's more than a pay scale.
Yes, yes.
It should be. A profit river, whatever.
Ryan has a couple of other items.
Trouble in the news first.
You choose.
Uh, I guess we'll look for the a little more troubling news first, um, so I talked a little bit of the last meeting about the finger community with that, um. Some changes with PIA's service and how they're operating currently, um. Talked last time, December twenty eighth, twenty two, they put out their winter schedule, um, they. The way any and all Sunday flying, including vacancies. Uh, there was some talk that Saturday's business here from that station as well. A lot of that was claims for historic remote flight volume, um, and kind of broader financial difficulties within their organization. Um, there have been a. At least three or four meetings uh since then between uh different parties and island representatives and PIA. Um, and we kind of have a. Uh, not so great outlook at the moment, um. So, um, in no really unclear terms, um, PIA has kind of stated that their business is at a crossroads. Um, is one of the words that they used, uh, they discussed a few different routes, how they're considering navigating. Their current financial issues, um, the as well as hinted at the. Pretty uh significant possibility of closing their doors outright. If they are to continue business, uh, they, one of the. Likely avenues they discussed was a seasonal model, so they would operate as they have during kind of peak summertime months, uh, where they're. Making the most revenue and then moving south uh during the winter months, uh, winter months hasn't really been clearly defined yet. Rick Latimer has, um, him and I have been talking a lot and with PIA about this, uh, he. Pushed them in several meetings to provide a financial figure that would need to. Stand for them to continue operations as they do currently, uh, that figure was about four hundred thousand dollars a year.
Is that per island or total?
Total between the two and all islands.
Okay.
Um, but still hundred and thirty three thousand, three hundred and thirty three dollars. Yeah, per island, if it's three islands, it's still a. Exponential cost increase over what we currently do. So that could be paid by any one or all islands, um, that ticket or that, excuse me, that price. That contract price. Um, would include ticket pricing staying the way it is currently. So any change to reducing current ticket prices would then even increase in that. The original contract price. Uh, so right now we pay nine hundred dollars per emergency flight. Six fifty for NP patient to Brocklands, two fifty for return of the NP. Uh, so that would be unchanged, it also does not include any kind of changes to night time or low light operating hours. Uh, that would require infrastructure investment to all airstrips as well as an increase to the theoretical contract price. Uh, for staffing, training on PIA's end. Rick Leimer kind of suggested that. Even if that. That figure was to be entertained, that possibly the best way to handle that would be establishing a five oh one C three to represent all involved. Towns, islands. Um, to oversee the payment of that money and the actual contract of that, those services. That would. Presents a fair amount of logistical problems, getting to staff that committee. Where's the money coming from, how are we making sure that those services are done equitably, is it split evenly between three islands, is it split between more islands? Do we involve swans, do we involve Islesboro, um, there's. Any number of questions you have, you name it, that's. Uh, kind of been thought of already and. It's a. Very difficult proposition, um, even, I guess that even if distributed evenly, that's about a hundred and thirty four thousand dollars. Uh, already in twenty twenty two, we we built into ambulance budget, as you know, um, transport budget. We pay about fifty four thousand dollars to PIA and calendar of twenty two uh for sixty total emergency flights. Ex- exponential cost increase, uh, we do get some of that. A fair amount of that money back uh through billing, but. Not all of it. And none of this theoretical contract payment, we'd not be getting any of that money back through billing. Kind of. Going forward, what we've sort of done so far, uh, Rick Latimer, I spoke with him yesterday, he's presented. What he has essentially this to North Haven Select Board. Uh, North Haven's board found that this was probably not a long term, tenable position, they have a lot of questions about. Propping up a private company with. Uh, taxpayer money or even donation money, however. That could be handled, um, they've decided that they're not interested in chasing that rabbit. Uh, Rick has moved on to pricing outs and emergency services vessel, uh, that's something I know has been explored by. Different islands in the past. Uh, it would be costly, it's bound to be popular then, it's certainly costly now, but if we're. Looking at a one hundred thousand dollar bill anyway. It's probably worth reexamining that route, um, so Rick is currently working on that. Uh, been working closely to come on that as well. Uh, the other option I would like to get the board's permission for is to start speaking with other air carriers in the region. Um, we actually spent a lot of time talking with the Alaskan Islands, uh, different EMS services out there. They typically have multiple services that provide this kind of work to them, so there's some competitive pricing, at least a little bit that goes on. Uh, with that having multiple carriers involved. Um, so I was hoping to, I know there there is a exclusive use contract in place for our airstrip, so I. Touch that with a ten foot pole without the uh express permission of my bosses here. Uh, so I would like to get that permission and then I can start feeling out if there's any kind of interest for many carriers and. Filling in a comparable service level, um. May or may not be the same kind of thing, but something. Uh, the emergency services boat would have. A lot of the problems it's had historically, we might also have to, with that option, we work some of our mutual aid agreements right now, we have a really great agreement with South Comston. We fly Brockland, um, Owl's Head. Patient handoff there, they're right there on the land, they go to Penn Bay. It only costs about a hundred and twenty five bucks from us to South Comston, um. Moving to the boat model, we might have to rework out some stuff going into Journey's End with Rocklands. Um, who currently charges eight hundred for a comparable handoff, um, so we would have to probably negotiate some with. Rocklands, possibly South Comston, um, going that route, there's also questions about, is this going to be owned by Vinyl Haven, is it by North Haven, is it gonna be owned again by Collective? Uh, how are we gonna staff that? Vessel. Pay for all that, and that where it can be moored, all of those myriad of questions, um. Sounds like from some of the research Rick has done, that's. A smaller kind of. Larger end lobster boat sized vessel, uh, you would only need a six pack license to staff that kind of a vessel, you would need. Makes some deckhands to do that, going any larger, we're gonna get into coast guard inspections, uh, rate, charging all. All that kind of nautical stuff that I'm not well versed in. Yeah, so those are kind of the two major options at the moment, um. Parties that are currently working on this, obviously myself, I've been working a lot on this, Rick Latimer, we've been talking a lot in the last couple of weeks. Uh, I'd like to continue doing that, we've also been talking to some of our. The EMS advocating body, APEN's, one of the partners EMS, uh, their special project manager works very closely with state legislature, um. Uh, myself and North Haven Service Chiefs, we had a meeting with him. Uh, he heard our story and is aware of the situation and kind of the. Significance of it, and he's hoping to get some. Legislatures to come to the table with us and PIA possibly and kind of. Maybe navigate a way to. Continue their services without trying to go down this other route, um. My personal suggestion would be that we should. It would be in our best interest to proceed as the PIA is not going to be here uh in the next calendar year. I would suggest that that's. We have. Best interest in ensuring that we can continue to do the patient transfers at the rate that we do, um. Going forward, if PIA can't be a part of that, and we have a. Kind of a duty to investigate other options.
So. Will they be available, they're gonna be available for this summer session?
Yes.
And then it's the fall, we're not sure if they're gonna be around.
Yes, so the last meeting that I attended, they said we're right now, we're looking fine through the summer season. At the end of this summer season, they're going to be. Doing some significant evaluations.
So it could be October, November that we would no longer have.
I believe so, yes, they have not been great about providing timelines, right? I believe so, yes. They have not been great about providing timelines for a lot of.
I mean, I wouldn't think it would be September, that's still technically summer, so. Ryan, have you given any thought to possibly looking at applying? Because there are going to be days when the boat won't make it across, but a plane can.
Yep, we're any and all options at the table at the moment. Certainly interested in pursuing one. Plane kind of has the same sort of questions that a boat would.
Yep.
Just a different set of problems. There's the insurance part, there's who's going to fly it.
Who's going to fly it?
It would mainly, would mainly EMS even allow for us to staff our own? Kind of evacuation.
Brian can give his prior insight. Yeah.
A lot of questions that certainly any and all options. I'm happy to chase down as many rabbits as we can.
Well, first, let me just say, I don't think anyone disagrees. You have our permission to pursue other. Airlines that are willing to take over the agreement, the contract, or however we have to.
Yeah.
Go about it. Vanishing good hand.
I was just going to find out, there's a boat on the fire rescue logo on his jersey. The decision may have been made already.
The very misleading boat does not exist.
There was auto work down before. I mean, if, if you're going to have, I don't see the point in like North Haven having their own boat and Vinyl having their own boat. So in that case, you have one boat, so it'd have to be moored up in Thirafair, right? Wouldn't that make the most sense logistically? I know it's farther up.
Kind of.
Yeah.
It's going to take longer to vinyl haven ambulance to get to the Thirafair, but. Yeah.
Be quicker to rock them by the end of the day, probably.
Also, the problem of Matenakis.
Right.
But that's the other, that was the other thing I was getting to.
All of the other services PIA provides to them, if PIA disappears, they are.
They're screwed.
Pretty close to dead in the water.
And well, they've, they've all got boats. Just kidding, it would be a big, it would be a big blow to them for sure. Yeah.
Um, so is this just for emergency services or are we looking at? Like, like PIA does with people and trade and.
From what I can say, tell it's reduced service all around, correct? Correct. It's not, it's not just emergency service, it's everything.
Okay, but I mean, if we go with a different airline.
Right.
Would it be just for emergency care or would it be like Pen Bay?
I would think they would want more, yeah.
Regular customers and that type of thing.
But we'd have to contract with them. To be, make it exclusive. For the airstrip.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yes.
That lease would be.
The lease would be.
Now and void with.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You just have to rewrite. I would assume that's what we'd have to do.
If they, if the new company agreed to it.
Yes.
The other thing, you have to go through all.
Okay.
Well, what about, well, a few years ago when they. Uh, weren't, was it the FAA or the ma- the medical, I can't remember. They weren't even going to consider allowing PIA to transport. Patients and that got cleaned up, right? That got approved, so we got, it didn't?
No, it didn't.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we had to create a whole other.
Right.
Technically an ambulance service where Vinyl Haven restricted air ambulance service so that we can.
So would we have to go through that whole process with another outfit? I mean, is that, is that going to create a problem?
As far as the new air carrier.
Yeah.
Likely not because the skeleton is built to have us have our own air ambulance service. It would just be. Getting the numbers swapped and that kind of thing.
So that.
Rebuild another module for that. For the boat, though, there's, that's. A strong possibility that we would have to look at how main EMS would handle that.
Okay.
And that would be another. One of the stacking issues.
That's what it is, main EMS, right? That was in, okay, I'm sorry, I just remembered, this was a couple of years ago, I think.
I'm not sure if Nick could offer you any advice, but he, you know, he's career coastguard. You know, he could be a good person to talk to about coastguard regulations. Yeah. And the other point that. When. We had, I was at one meeting with PIA and there's been a few more that I haven't attended, but one of the things that came up when. They were asking for us to contribute funds to. When I've Scott Island Air. Is, you know, we were asking for financial statements and they refused to give us any financial statements, which we thought was odd. So anyway, I thought that was.
Yeah, we're not going to just pony up four hundred K, you're not going to press financially.
That doesn't, that doesn't even sound right to me somehow. Like why we, why do you have to? That's a lot of money to support.
A private business.
Yeah.
Yes, it is.
It's a slippery slope there.
And it's that, that number's not going to stay there either, it's going to go up.
Oh, absolutely.
That would.
It wouldn't be the forever.
Next year be five hundred thousand.
I mean, you'd have to look at it like it's a. And I've gone back and forth trying to figure out, would it be? Justifiable to pay anything? I mean, you have to look at it like it's a service that is, if the necessary by the town. If split amongst. Three, four communities, would it be? Would it be worth it at that point? I don't know, but maybe at some point it would be, but again, I, I. Said right off the bat, this is very slippery slope. We start funding.
Private businesses.
Private businesses.
For a service we're already paying for, we then have to then pay for our top up, right?
Yeah.
Like this is just, we need four hundred K upfront, and then you're going to pay for everything in the after, right? So it's.
Then it'll still be nine hundred dollars a truck on top of the form.
A portion. Yeah, this is in addition to what we already pay.
Sounds like a shell to me. Wow.
It's a kind of a situation that hopefully maybe someone else can step into, but. It's a service that I feel the town needs on a lot of ends.
Yeah.
There's someone out there that will jump into the. Like those are people out there.
I'm just curious, is there any chance that Lifeline could pick up some of these? How booked up are they or something? It's just not, not a reality?
No, that, that was a personal call we made. Lifeline is not interested in becoming essentially a taxi service for medically stable patients. They're. They really need to stay, they're critically oriented and critically focused that.
Absolutely.
It's a differential.
Yes.
That makes sense. Yeah, they're wonderful.
Been lucky to have it so far that they.
Yeah.
That they. Will make sure that we have no other.
They, they bend their rules.
We've had all of them though, yeah.
Although a great organization.
Yeah.
And you, you have good news?
Small, no, we bring, we bring bad news and lots of money.
I have one good thing, good news, I don't think he has any good. This is just a grant that I'm interested in pursuing. Long to short of it, there's about a potentially two hundred K per fiscal year for the next three fiscal years available for rural EMS agencies. Can be used for pretty much anything we want to. Training EMTs, pursuing continuing education hours, equipment, things. All that stuff, the only caveats are we have to, I have to build in. Working closely with substance abuse disorders agencies, local community resources as well as county resources. To build in kind of better continuum for care for patients suffering from substance abuse disorder as well as other mental health issues. Just have to be able to. Show the course of the project that we built in those resources, trained our EMTs on those resources and trained new EMTs with those resources. How to more effectively treat those patients and that kind of thing. The other caveat to that is there is an expectation that. Services match ten percent of the awarded amount. So for, if it was a two hundred K award. We would contribute twenty K to that project. That's. Most of that is just already stuff we've built into our operating budget, paying employees going on runs, doing trainings, working at station, that kind of thing. It's, it's pretty, pretty loose with the guidelines for how that contributes. The only criteria is that it does not come from another federal source, which most of our money doesn't come from. There are two fairly significant purchases I'd like to make in the next fiscal year, so this would certainly uptake the edge off a couple of that. Where we, we just today, we've got a couple of cardiac monitors that we're going to be needing purchased to, so. Older service models that are at the end version slide, so that money could contribute to this. We could contribute to that purchase and bear enough twenty K right off the bat, and then the rest of the money is just. We can do what we need to do. That would be huge to train new EMTs, biggest kind of part entry, as I see it, is. People that want to do it, getting them trained, getting them to the training to do it, getting them trains. Then not losing all their wages while they're off islands, doing that kind of thing and then coming back. And then obviously ensuring that they're adequately compensated when they return to do that kind of thing. So this amount of money would, especially over three fiscal years, that would be absolutely enormous. So I'd like permission to pursue that.
Of course, so do you have to apply each year or could you only apply once if you, like if you applied once and get it, is that it? You can't apply again?
No, you can apply.
Okay.
Each new fiscal year, as long as you can show that your project is working as, you're meeting their standards. And if you, so if we applied for the first one, due date is May first, if we weren't awarded this year, the next fiscal year, we could reapply again for following years and for whatever reason we, we're not.
You think you'll be able to make that May first deadline this year?
It should be possible.
Okay.
Have you started the application?
I have not. I just got this on my desk yesterday.
Okay.
But.
So you can go home and start working on it.
Let him go home and have a drink. Yes, permission granted. You may apply for this. Please, please and thank you. Unless anyone objects, does anyone object? All right, four, four, four oh and one.
That's great. Thank you, Ryan.
That's all my.
No, well, I don't think any of us are surprised, you know? I know I wasn't surprised. I think we've heard rumblings about them pulling out, so. Anyway. You've got bad news too? No news is good news. So if you don't have anything to say.
Don't say anything.
All right, so we're going to table number eight, correct?
Yes.
And then we'll move on to nine. New business, annual town report dedication in memoriam and ATMD.
Yeah, we need to set the annual town meeting date.
Oh, man, it sounds all right.
Yeah.
The last day of school is the sixteenth.
Is it really? Are you sure?
That's the word from.
Are you sure? Because last I heard, we're going like right through till July.
That was the word from. The bookkeeper from Monty is that the last day of school is the sixteenth, graduation is the seventeenth. So after that.
So that next week?
Yeah, that next week or the, the lot, either the, of the last two weeks.
The third week, I can do it. Last week I am not here.
Okay.
So.
Third week it is, I guess.
And unless, I mean, I'm finding anyone else doing it, how many, without me.
What, what is on the twentieth?
The night, the week of the nineteenth to the twenty-third.
We can pick anything.
We usually do Wednesday.
I think a Wednesday is a little bit.
Yeah.
So the twenty-first, June twenty-first?
That's a solstice. Sure.
Will be plenty of daylight to get it done.
Yes, I'll have to check my social calendar, but I'm probably available.
Sure, we have prizes so people show up.
Yeah, like the.
I mean, we might as well try anything at this point.
And when do we do that?
Six, I think we should start. Yeah.
All right. The earlier the better. How about four thirty?
That's what I was saying.
Everybody's out of work by four thirty.
I mean, I'm, I'm willing to start five, but I'm about four thirty. Do we want to start earlier?
I think we did five thirty.
I think we did five thirty last year.
Five, five thirty, whatever you want to do.
Five thirty then.
Okay.
Five thirty.
Five thirty.
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first, five thirty.
And you also have a list to consider for your. In memoriam dedication.
This one?
Yep. Or if you have other ideas.
I don't have any ideas.
They're gone.
To the fire and EMS that.
You know something we don't know? What's going on here? Got a wealthy donor, we consider it.
I don't know, I don't think they're supposed to have to decide tonight.
No, you don't need, no, that was just a list to consider and think about and, right?
Yeah.
No, because you're supposed to say now, immediately.
No, well, some, they don't always do a memoriam and don't, it's usually a dedication.
Always dedicated, but not a memoriam necessarily.
Yeah.
Sometimes they've done both.
Yeah.
But anyway.
But, um, yeah. The dedication? Oh, it's a good idea, actually, Margaret.
I know, I think it is.
Because I, I vote for that.
You should be a dedication.
Yeah, that's I hope for what Margaret just wanted suggested. Fire an EMS.
You're going to write it?
Am I going to write it? You know what a good writer I am.
Hey, it was fine.
All right, let's.
Yeah, think about it.
While we have the ambulance director and the fire chief here, do you want to, I'm sorry, I don't, I don't need to move. If you don't want to.
Nope, we can move on. Let's go. The budget one show.
I was just thinking that while they're here and, you know, instead of. Going after something else, we could talk of, if there's anything to discuss, that if you have questions about the ambulance or fire. Mark and I have been having discussions about.
Someone mentioned.
The. Public safety building and a new fire charge. But I don't know, I don't, I'm also, I'm. I don't need to take over the meeting.
She loves that.
I mean, it's still a fluid document. It's, you know, I'm coming to the end. I, I think it's looking pretty good based on comparisons to last year.
You have the overall in here. Sorry, I was looking at.
Yeah, so overall, it's still like two percent over the previous year. I'd like to look a little bit closer. I. Based on the twenty twenty-one audit, we have. Three million, five hundred dollars in our fund balance, so I think there's a little, this capacity there to use some of our fund balance, but I do want to. Do a little bit more analysis of the. We're doing the twenty twenty-two audit right now, but I'd like to look at the twenty twenty-two figures a little bit more closely to see. What, if I can estimate the fund balances at the end of twenty twenty-two. Just so I'm completely comfortable with using, you know, this six hundred and fifty thousand on a fund balance. To keep the taxation where it was in the previous year. So as I said, I'm not, I'm not completely done. Millie still has some items that she's looking at in terms of getting back to that's. So her budget isn't completely finally yet.
On the professional services.
I have that now.
You have that now.
And it's only, it's a lot less, well, if you look at.
Twenty K in here.
Yeah.
My concern is we're going to need more money in the legal budget.
Oh. Oh, professional services, I thought, I thought you were talking about planning. I apologize. You think that there's going to be legal fees?
Um, yeah, that's something. Under old business, we'll, we'll discuss more of that, because that. It sounds like we might have to go back.
Adjust that a little bit.
Yeah, that's why I said we'd have one more idea of what. What issues are there if we're going to have to go back? What issues are there if we're gonna have to go back? Well, that, but. I mean, cause we were, we planned for what seventy in the last budget and we went way past that within like six months.
That's for engineering and legal.
Engineering and legal, okay, between the two. What do we have in legal right now?
For this budget?
This budget.
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five.
I guess what you should keep in mind is that when Faye and I talked to Ben Plant. He was. Pretty adamant about if you're going to find um Mister Blackington in contempt. Then the burden of proof lies with the town.
Right.
And there has to be very good documented proof of what. Why you're finding him in contempt. And I'm talking about. Pictures and reports. And to my knowledge, there is nothing. I mean, to my mind, if I was gonna go before a judge, I would want. An inspection report for this date with pictures.
Yeah.
Boom. The next week, inspection report, pictures, boom. You know, what Ben Plant said was the judge is not gonna take it kind, you know. Well, if you come back to court and just say he's in contempt.
Right.
There has to be very good documented proof of the fact that there is a contempt. So that this is, and Faye was on this conversation with the attorney as well. So she's aware of what he said.
When was this, when was this meeting?
This is before um. When you were considering, this was quite a while.
This back in December?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
But since then, he's applied for. Permit for a garage, correct? Which is in violation of that agreement that he signed, is it not?
It's a violation of the ordinance. I'm not sure what the.
How do you? The court order just said that he cannot operate an automobile graveyard or junkyard.
Or junkyard, okay, so garage.
The separate, this is a land use. This, the garage permit is a separate from the junkyard.
Okay, so it is separate from that. Okay, alright, so I had that confused, my fault. Um, but I'm also concerned with. His behavior at the meeting. I know I did not attend, but reports back were that he was not civil. He was threatening. That's not acceptable to me. For any time play, so. But I'm also aware, even if he does, we get the documentation and we go back to court and prove that he's in violation. What are the chances he's gonna fix things and actually pay up? Cause it was. I I don't know. It, we can, we can discuss that more. Sorry, I'm getting off topic here on the budget.
That's alright.
So. Were you almost at the end? There's a couple more things to iron out for the budget basically, and then we should be done pencils down essentially and we can review in total.
Um, I still, as I said, I met with Millie this morning. She has a few things that she wants to get an estimate on a generator for her. Uh, public works building. She still needs to get estimates from Lucas striping, but. That's a uh, a conversation. I said, well, if you, if we get it done this spring, then we really don't need anything. In that budget. So she's still working with Lucas striping on those estimates. Um, there were several things that she's still, um, all these little flyers here are Millie's contingencies. Um, that she's still uh getting estimates. So her budget doesn't seem file. I don't know if you wanna. I mean, this is, I mean, I'm feeling pretty good about where I'm at right now. In terms of the final budget. I mean, it's only, you know, it's about two percent above the previous year. And I don't know. That's.
In that, only two percent, but that includes. Taking, would you say six hundred K from?
Well, that's just the the total budget. All the departments. Uh, the four million figure is.
Four point one five.
Well, on this page, this is the latest one. This is only point six. The four million one sixty-four is only point six percent above the total budget last year, the total municipal budget.
So for the four one six two, that's, that's the number right now.
Fourth, four million one sixty-four.
I have four million one sixty-two.
Yeah.
One twenty-five.
Yeah, it's, it's very close to that.
Which yeah, it's only point six above.
Yeah.
So my question is, on that total there, does that include taking from fund balance?
No, if you look at this, uh, that shows the revenue portion. So taxation would be up two percent if I take that much out of fund balance. Taxation would be two million eight fifty-six.
How much would you know?
What?
How much could it be if you don't take anything out of fund balance?
Oh, gosh, uh.
Three point.
Well, that would be the.
Three point five, right?
Two point eight plus.
Plus the six fifty-three, so you have three point. Um, three point five, almost three point six. Well, you've got two things working for you. Number one, last year.
We brought the budget up about five and a half percent uh from total or right around that number. And we had. Uh, actually a cut in taxes because of the increased building and. The new assets coming on stream. This last year, there's been a huge amount come on screen, so you may not be in. Uh, quite as much of a crisis.
I mean, you're right, there's still a lot of contingencies. I don't have any idea what the total value is gonna be. Um, I haven't even, I haven't done a mill rate um estimate, estimate. Yet, you know, I have a worksheet that I can do that, uh, and sometimes that's helpful, sometimes it not, because I don't have. Um, as I, as you mentioned, the total value. So it, until you have that, it kinda skews the. Um, mill rate calculation.
But again, last year was a very pleasant surprise and. I would hope this year is not that much different. Frankly, I'd be inclined to go with the three percent though increase and then if we have to.
And reduce the amount of fund balance?
Yes.
Reduce the amount taken from the now.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. Just never know.
Sorry, Millie, go ahead.
Um, I just wanna. I believe the generator was uh supposed to be in the amount for, from the punch list, Marjorie. I don't think it was to go in this year's budget. Um, I think that that was already planned on. Part of the building when it was built to have that generator in place.
To take that out of the thirty thousand that we have left?
Correct.
Okay, okay. I thought that was one of the things we talked about for the new budget.
No, I I think I asked you to move that out of there. Um, it's supposed to be one of the punch list items. I think all that we have is the uh coal tar patch, the sand salt and the striping. The generator shouldn't, I don't think should be in there. I think that should come out of the thirty.
What she's talking about is the money that was left in the reserve fund for the uh public works building.
Yep. And there was another list of things that Brett mentioned about fixing up.
Yeah.
That that was gonna be.
The floor.
That was gonna be covered by most of what was left.
Um, Millie would probably, there's the floor and what.
There is uh the floor where uh floods into my office. Um, putting bollards outside the garage doors to prevent damage to the building. Um, or the doors while backing in and out. Um, and then uh we were looking at. Um. At somehow figuring out a way to waterproof the wall from the garage to the office, the kitchen. Because that all floods um when the trucks are in there wet.
Yeah. Okay.
So. The discussion about the legal fees is for another time or?
Yeah. I mean, hopefully we don't have to raise it much, but but.
I'd rather raise it now than go back for more later.
True.
Well, you know, yeah, you know, you know, we're gonna need some.
I mean, if, I mean, if we're adding like even twenty and thirty thousand, it's not like a percent. I think we should do. Be like a hundred and percent move. It's not, it's not gonna be a big number.
I say go there, God. Think there needs to be more in there than.
Yeah. As we said, sorry, I was just looking at it.
So right now I have thirty-five in legal and twenty in engineering. Do you wanna just raise it? To the same as last year, the seventy thousand or? I don't, I don't.
Well, we had a. We're at a hundred K, right, of actual, so we're under thirty. Like, should we bump it up?
So really, you've got a, you know, with the special town meeting, you had a hundred thousand dollars for legal. We've spent thirty-four thousand six eighty-two in the current year budget.
Yeah. So we're actually under on that budget technically.
Yes, cause I have forty thousand less the thirty-four six eighty-two. So a little bit left.
So we we really overspent on engineering services. In this current.
Well, we hadn't.
Cause sorry, what do we, what do we ask for additional funds? It was thirty, it was thirty, right?
Twenty and ten.
Was twenty and ten.
Twenty for legal, ten for engineering.
Yeah.
Think so.
So we basically had to double the legal services budget. Okay, so we were. So I was thinking before we got the additional funds and after.
Yeah, we put ten, it was fifty thousand that was in engineering. We added ten.
Yeah.
So we're. As far as the original engineering budget, we're over slightly by eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. Is that what your question was?
Yeah, so like originally the legal service was only twenty K. We added twenty when we asked for the additional thirty.
I believe so, yes.
So we're asking for thirty-five. I think we should just put, bump that up to fifty for legal services for like this year. That should be enough.
Yes.
That, that better be enough. It better be more than enough, but.
It better be too much.
Yes, exactly. When, when do we get? Valuation figures?
Well, April first is that magic date that, you know, we're supposed to look at values as of that date. So um. Um, Travis will be going out and based on the building permits that we've had over the past year. Or even previous building permits, cause you know, for instance, if a house was half built last year, he's still gotta, you know. Update those records. So he'll be going out and um looking at various properties.
It's gonna take my roses to terrible shape. My rose in such terrible shape, he won't, he won't be able to. Cause yeah, it would be nice if we could have a better, if we didn't have to take money from fund balance and I still. And we were still only up three percent.
Really healthy. It's fifty percent of our, in, well, twenty twenty-one. No, I'm sorry. In the last commitment for the year we're in now, um, it was, the, I'm sorry. The commitment was around seven million. So our fund balance is fifty percent of our commitment. Which is extremely healthy.
Yeah.
I mean, that's what towns dream about.
Okay.
You have a dream fund balance, you know.
So it saves it all.
I. Um, I mean, I used to do municipal auditing for a living, so I, you know, I've talked about. You know, different people have different um ideas about what the fund balance should be. But you know, one of the ideas is to have fifty percent of a commitment figure. And, but you know, nobody has that and you do. So it's, I mean, it's.
Three and a half, that's seven, but our commitment is gonna be over that now, right? Cause I can't imagine the. The school budget's gonna be less, no.
Right. I'm just saying that I don't disagree with you. I'm just saying that your fund balance is extremely healthy.
Yeah.
And that there wouldn't be, I don't believe in my opinion that you'd have a problem in using some of that to keep taxation at a. Um, a good level of, you know. Um, did you have any questions for fire or ambulance? Uh.
You always want, want, want.
The uh capital projects um part for the fire department. We are asking.
Upside down.
Unless you don't wanna talk about it.
Cause the, that has to do with. The work has to be done to extend so we can fit.
Put the brakes on that project.
Okay.
Um, so. Um. Marjorie asked me, we could go to, kinda get together replacement schedule for the apparatus, what that would look like. So she can work on, you know, what the amount to go to uh put in the reserve funding. So. I know last year we talked about extending the bay so that it could accommodate a larger truck. And we look pretty good truck. So in my research, um, talked to the vice president Greenwood EV, emergency vehicles. Um, so, all the northeast. So, and also by periodically checking the used truck market, there's. Very little out there right now. You know, I mean, what's out there is his opinion very much overpriced and a lot of young. So, explain to my situation of, you know, shortened bay and. What, I'm gonna need this, what's? Bare bones, pump a truck, I want any frills, just standard, whatever you can get me for a thousand gallon tank. And a twelve fifty pound, um, very similar to the truck we have now. So we came back with um. Well, now it's about four hundred and ten thousand dollars for us. For that size truck, um. Looking at it, um, it was twenty-six foot eight inches to start with and the truck still wouldn't fit in the bay. Um, however, I've worked with it, we've tried to, I think we can. Fit that truck in the bay now that you make some adjustments to it without making a custom truck, which we. Again, talking. Would fit into that bay. Um. I think we have. I mean, the average age of our trucks right now is twenty-eight and a quarter. So, agent athlete, pretty. Pushing it pretty hard on that end of things. Um. And like I told Chris Champagne, that's I, we have had fairly good luck with that used truck, although it did blow an engine last year. Um, but that's, that's what you get sometimes, but um. And. He said maybe in five, ten years, that market may switch or switch around. The, the reason being is that. Right now, if we ordered that truck tonight, a brand of truck is, you'd see two years.
In two years?
If you buy the custom truck, you'd see three years. The. So we do, I mean, one good thing is we do have. Several amount of money in the uh reserve account. Is my suggestion maybe to see if we could go to town meet and then. If we put that hundred fifty that was gonna go to the.
The garage.
Right, put it to the purpose of building, uh buying the truck. I think one thing you should we should consider is that we. Purchase the truck like now or so much tonight, but.
Soon.
The inflation rate on fire trucks now is one percent a month. So you're looking anywhere twelve to seventeen percent a year on inflation rate. I mean, borrow the money at five percent and still be better than. So the sooner we buy the cheap and the cost, if we locked in the price.
Do we have to pay it all upfront?
None of.
Okay, none upfront.
The thing he was gonna try to get from me today, which I just checked my email before it came up, was that if you pay some amounts in different increments, there'll be a discount. Um but really, you don't have to pay to the truck until.
So it's really two fiscal years from now we have to have, so we'd have time. Alright, so.
So. I don't wanna interrupt you.
Because the age of our fleet is. What it is. We're looking at replacing all of them soon, right? So do we wanna stagger?
Well, the next one would be twenty nine, we figured, right?
So the, right, so the next truck.
That's the utility. I apologize. The E two, we have twenty thirty.
Which hopefully would be a. Last of a truck, which I want to move a brush truck. It's a smaller one. Hopefully, it wouldn't be four hundred thousand. See if we can, and again, maybe the market will turn around in four or five years for a used truck. Again, you don't put miles on them, but.
Right.
Again, the the age of him is what's gonna essentially. Looking at. So the benefit of getting a new one would, it would, you know, offset that replacement. You start at. Thirty, what are we looking at? Thirty two would be a perfect replacement. Every truck would be every years if you could get it. Another truck, but you'll just want a thirty two years, maybe thirty five. The. You know, so maybe we can look at used and stagger that somehow into. It's hard to get on that replacement schedule if you, if you buy used, you'd also take off time on that on your other hand, right? So if you're hoping for. Thirty five year, thirty two, whatever you're looking at your lifespan, you buy one that's already ten years old. Taken. Ten years, you don't have warranty, we we get the truck, I might blow electronics, might be shot.
Yeah.
Take all that risk when you buy used.
So what is what is the warranty on a new truck?
It's at least ten.
Ten years. And it covers. Almost everything, everything. Other than normal wear and tear stuff, right?
So what I think what what we would like to do, and correct me if I'm wrong, what we would like to do. Is go to town meeting to do something with that hundred and fifty thousand that was approved to renovate the building and I.
That was last year's.
It was in last.
This year it's fiscal budget, right? Okay.
I contacted main municipal legal, they're a free legal advice for municipalities. Uh to see. If we can somehow go to town meeting to change the purpose of that borrowing. Or if we have to just move forward with that, and we'd like to put a hundred thousand dollars into the reserve fund and there's two hundred and eighty nine thousand. Currently there. And then we'd also just like permission to order the truck based on the funds that we already have in place.
So we're two eighty nine in the fund balance. We want another hundred added to the fund balance this year. And then repurpose the hundred fifty K that was approved, which we have not borrowed yet.
Correct. It's just that.
I'll see why you couldn't.
It's authorized but not issued.
Right.
You wouldn't have, I mean, that was kind of my thing is they wouldn't have to use that hundred fifty. I I we've kind of left on this conversation. If if you put a hundred in this year, a hundred in next year.
You'd already have.
You'd have that, you would have to borrow that money in order to. You know, which town means it said no. I mean, they could say no to that too, I guess, the hundred fifty, but.
Well, the hundred fifty's already been approved. Has not been.
For the purpose of renovating.
That purpose, right, so it. I feel like. Man, I don't see why people would object to changing the purpose. It's still going. It's ultimately the same thing. We we need a new fire engine.
Have we done anything? I'm looking at grants.
There's grants up there when they open up. I mean, I applied for them in the past.
Cuz I know on the inflation, the Inflation Adjustment Act, wherever it's called, there's a lot of money that's set for fire, police and EMS.
Yeah, I mean, that's the rule. I mean, again, if we wait, we wait another year, we know two years, again, bill time, two years, three years, I hope inflation's twelve fifteen percent.
I don't mean to make light of that, but we uh we've, well. My experience is that we have filled out those applications in the past and we've never been successful. Not that to say that we should stop, but we just have not ever been successful in getting those grants. And I don't mean to make light of the fact that there is money available, but we've never been successful in in getting any of that money.
I mean, we've been setting aside money into reserve for this purpose to buy a new truck, but it wouldn't hurt though, if there are. Right, but we need four new trucks, not just one, so. We should approach, my my opinion is we should. Work to get, work to get the funds. Available to purchase the trust net, which we don't have to pay for in two years, correct? Cuz it would be ready in two years. Then we, in that meantime, yes, apply for grants to get the second, third and fourth trucks, hopefully. Um, I wasn't saying we don't with the first.
Yeah, okay.
Both.
Then then, yes, I agree. We should do both. Wherever there's money. To be had grant money that we can get to fund. Whatever the town needs, we should always do it. So. I mean, I'm I'm fine with that plan that Marjorie, Mark had presented. Does anyone else have any issues with that?
Guess the next question would be. Do you, oh, that's a question for you guys. Do you wanna order the truck like ASAP or do you wanna wait till? This guy suggested order ASAP.
Sooner than later. I mean, if there's no money down, I don't see what the risk, we. We need a new truck, right? There's no getting around it. We're gonna need. So, yeah, um. I'm fine with it. Anyone else have any objections?
Any resale value on the old one?
Put it out the bed.
Yeah, I mean, that that's why we would build up the fund balance is to purchase a new vehicle, so. By all means, let's do that. We have. Almost enough as it is appropriated. If we can get that hundred fifty K. Redirected, then we're basically there.
So I don't like to spend money anymore.
No.
You guys, but it's.
Right.
Some point, the plate is getting there.
It's almost thirty years old, so like. So, alright. Anything else? Out of the ordinary within the budget?
Any more trouble that you?
I can't think of anything else that we um. Argued about.
And if either of you need a proofreader for your grant stuff.
What a great writer.
I could help. I'm happy to help.
But we've been successful in some equipment once before, where it seemed like when we went from, went to the apparatus ones, like two or three different units, and this was a few years ago. It wasn't the last couple of years, for sure, but. Wouldn't know, I don't know, but we feel like we get some SCBA, we got turnout gear, we got bill station, so a bunch of stuff. It's a lot of time.
Yes, it does. So I'm just throwing it out there.
Awesome.
I don't have any questions or problems with either the fire department or Andrews, but certainly these guys are here and you have questions about anything.
Did we have a review, I feel like we did.
I think we did.
No, I don't.
I don't remember. I missed.
It's only up, it's only up one and a half percent. I mean.
And the budget committee had reviewed, has already reviewed, or is that right? No, I'm sorry. I have not. I'm sorry. The budget committees reviewed admin, Washington School, Assessor.
There's any input or questions or comments from the budget? You did review.
You did? And I wasn't at the meeting or? Okay.
The questions were, uh, fifty oh, what does an AED, what does AED equipment cost? That was one.
Was that in? The operating budget under equipment or?
In the ambulance.
Okay.
I'm reading from the minutes.
Okay, okay.
And uh, so there were some questions regarding. The AEDs and. So I guess part of it was, uh. Booths for the AEDs or, you know, containers for the AEDs. And.
Oh, okay.
Right, there is. Or next up, I I put in, I guess, for a new container for the. AED of Alderwood's neck currently it's on. Shed on someone's property and then goes inside their home during the winter because it's currently a temperature controlled unit, so I'd like to. Purchase a temperature controlled unit so it can be on. Actual public space and be well signed and identified like it should be. It should really be in someone's home where no one. Necessarily knows where it is unless they know that person. A little more accessible to the general public. Presume there is um, Knox County Dispatches working on developing a system for. Talking a caller to an AED, so having those AEDs signed appropriately and. Outdoor or at least accessible locations, they would be able to best pop someone to where that location is. Having that obviously for realists design, this is a key part of that.
So I believe, um, some of the questions were, how much of the cost is the AED versus the?
So we, at the moment, I'm not planning on buying, purchasing a new AEDs, saying any disasters, the units between. Now and who knows, um, the cabinet was just the cabinet itself, the budget that was, I was at before, that's about. I believe it was seven fifty, off the top of my head, seven hundred. I believe that's what it was.
Yeah, that's in the budget, yeah. An out outdoor temperature controlled AED cabinet, seven hundred dollars.
It's like the one that's in the therapy, if you were seeing one for therapy.
Okay, I I I think it wasn't clear whether that was for the, just the structure or or.
Oh, yeah, just for the structure of cabinet.
And uh, uh, the other question was, uh. Oh, why treat the ambulance director? Uh salary increase of five point eight percent better than everyone else who gets five point five percent.
Well, the other, um. There are other people that are getting more than that, uh such as the deputy clerk. Their library assistant. He, uh, one of our uh works employees.
Those are folks getting eight to five point eight percent or?
No, actually, uh, the deputy clerk is going up twelve point five percent, assistant librarian is ten point four percent. And seven point one percent.
Okay. So if you're not at the next meeting.
I don't know when it is, do you?
Thursday. Oh, uh, no, uh, I need to, it's either Wednesday or Thursday. Uh, it can be decided, I guess.
And of course.
Um, I haven't heard. We've always decided or whether it got decided. Um, so ambulance was table because of those questions that came up that we didn't have answers to, which you would think, I guess.
Okay.
So, uh. It'll be uh reviewed at the next meeting, I assume.
Okay.
Are there any more questions on the budget at this point?
The other thing I wanted to um make sure that we knew about was, um. That when you, this is a few years ago, the last time that we had a vote to, um. Borrow money for paving, it was seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I believe, but. The town only borrowed two hundred and sixty four thousand. So the remainder of that approval uh is still on the table to borrow for paving. Uh, it came up when I was doing the um borrowing for the transfer station. And you have to, of course, report any um. Money that's been approved but not issued and the our bond council at Drummond Winston. Was pointing out to me that um there's still that approval, you know, that amount of money. Has been approved to borrow, but it hasn't been issued yet. Uh, it's about four hundred and sixty five thousand dollars. I didn't, I don't think that you were aware of that, really.
Like, no. So we only borrowed. We were approved seven fifty. And we only borrowed.
Two sixty four.
Two sixty four.
What it was.
Okay.
So the remainder of that is still available. Anyway, I just wanted you to be aware of that because uh Millie and I have been talking, Millie can speak to it if she would like. Millie and I have been talking about the need for um something to be done on Round the Island Road. And it, there would be an opportunity to take advantage of that money that has already been authorized. Uh by the town, um cuz it's kind of sitting out there in limbo, if you will, to be acted upon.
Kind of wish we'd acted upon it when interest rates were a lot lower, but. Okay. But that, yeah, that won't impact this budget. It's already money that's been approved. You just didn't borrow it.
It will, it will not accept that depending on the timing, like if you said, well, let's go ahead and try to borrow that money. Of course, you'd have to figure, uh you might wanna say, well, have the first payment due in the next fiscal year, for instance. But you, I mean, you'd have to plan on paying the interest and the the first payment of the loan. So that's, it depends on the timing of the law.
Okay.
As to whether you need a payment.
Is that amount of money enough?
That was my.
To do much on Round the Island Road, that's my.
I mean, in rough figures, we were talking about five hundred thousand, you know. But that's a, that's a pretty rough figure for Around the Island Road. Is that, Millie, do you recall?
Um, I I think it was right around there, rough. Um, we concern, uh, for one thing, I think, um. Main Municipal is putting out, um. Bids for uh or invites to bid on municipality paving projects. Um, which sometimes is helpful, um similar to with with the sand salt. So I'm kind of hoping that they come in with some prices per mile that. Look okay to us that we can and uh join in on. Um, I'm not, I'm not sure when that's coming out because we just received, what was it, Marjorie? Maybe two weeks ago that we received the. The notification that there was an invite to bid.
Not too long ago, so, yeah, it's hu- four hundred and eighty five thousand six hundred is available to borrow.
Okay.
I I would think, what is, I think it's two point four miles. I'm off the top of my head. I would think that we would be fairly close to that amount. Open, fingers crossed.
So well, that. The last estimates we got for paving out here was, was it, wasn't it like? For a half mile, it was like.
Can't remember.
Two hundred fifty thousand, it was almost like a million dollars mile.
Yeah.
So I was thinking, that's what, that's what we were last told.
Sounds Andy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because we just get. The cost to bring everything out here, it just drives the cost up so much that we end up paying like almost four times what the mainland pays.
Well, we're at the point with, with round the island road that either we've got to turn it back to gravel or we've got to repair it.
No, I, I agree, it's one or the other. I mean, if we can fix it for five hundred thousand, then yes, go right ahead and do it, but if, I would be. We got even that for half a mile, um, but. Yes, let's see what happens with the bidding and that whole process, and if we can, if we can do it. Maybe if we can do a section of it for five hundred, then, then we should do it.
Yeah, because it has to be reclaimed, a lot of it.
If we're gonna pave it again, yeah, a lot of it's got to be reclaimed.
You know, the unfortunate part is, like I was talking, saying to Marjorie today is. You know, when we do a paving project. Um, the more you can do at a time, the better, because you save a, a whole lot of money. In mobilization and demobilization fees.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah.
I guess we have to kind of think that route as well, is do we just do that, or are there other problem areas that we should attend to at the same time? And get a, a price for all of that as well, like, I don't know.
Obviously, if we could do, because I think there's parts of North Haven Road that need to be done, and there's parts of. Like Dogtown and.
Dogtown's bad.
So there's. There's probably what, maybe four or five miles worth of road that we could probably. Easily do work on.
Easily, easily five, e- easily five, maybe, maybe even six, I haven't.
If you're going through this pricing and this. This bidding or whatever this process is, I, I would go for the whole. You know, go for five or six miles, what we really need to have done, see what the price is and go from there. Because I agree, the, the more you get done in one trip, the less you're gonna pay overall, because you don't have to have them keep coming back out.
Correct. I'll identify those areas in the next few days and, um. I mean, I'll, I'll probably reach out, I've, I've reached out to one paving company, haven't heard back from them yet. Um, we met with another one this past fall, or, yeah, it was last fall. Um, about the possibility of chip seal as well, which chip seal has come, I guess, a long ways from, from the past, but. I see Pam, I see you Pam. But, and I think, I think Marjorie can, can talk to that as well, but, um, chip seals are a long, a long way, has come a long ways. Um, she's been happy with what she's seen of its use in the past.
You know, we, um. I've seen it work really well on, uh, the island, the Chabig Island. And, um, you know, I was skeptical, but their roads are beautiful. You know, and, and they use a cold mix application and a chip seal process. Anyway.
Okay.
So, looking, I'm looking at different areas to see. Just wanna make sure that, uh, that's something that we can entertain before I do too much legwork on it.
I mean, it's something we're, we're gonna have to do at some point, right, like the round the island road. Terrible.
I, I can't, I can't, I mean, I'm just patching patch at this point, and it's, it's not even staying, I mean.
Right. Yeah, it's a waste of time and materials and.
It is, it is.
So. We're gonna have to do something, at least with that. Section of road. Sooner rather than later, the others, maybe we can get away with for a few more years, but again, then you just pay another mobilization fee to come back out and do something that you could have done. All at once, so.
I agree there.
Yeah, if you, you can put together a plan on what needs to be done. How much, you know, mileage wise, and then find out what it's gonna cost, we go from there.
So, Millie, you're gonna get more info on the chip seal?
Yes, I am Pam.
Might as well have the options.
Well, I mean, you know, we, we, we need options, I believe, not just.
Absolutely, I don't disagree.
Yep.
I just, um, it ha- it would have to improve, it could not have gotten worse.
Well, I mean, it's, it's had to have, I mean, that was what. That was had to have been more than twenty, thirty years ago when they chip sealed. And I, I. I'm hearing, I guess they've done a bunch in Wisconsin as well, and Wisconsin seems very happy with it as well, so. It's an interesting thought, and maybe we should all take a trip out to Chabig.
Yeah.
Well, I'm not going to Wisconsin, that's for sure.
I agree.
Um, the, the only other budget note that I can think of that I'd just like to touch on is, uh. It, it's situation with our tax maps. I'm still, I'm still working on get up, getting a proposal. Uh, from a company that's worked with a lot of, um, towns in Knox County, including North Haven. And, um. But I did contact, uh, Maine Municipal Legal Department, and they said that we could use our ARPA funds. For the, um, our tax map.
Alright, that's good.
So it won't, you know, it won't affect our, um. A budget.
Have you heard?
Got a hundred and twenty thousand available.
Have you heard from Gabe? On the planning budget?
Yes, and it's, it's very much reduced from.
The prior year.
The prior year. Um, I think that's.
So she is gonna stay on and coordinate down, down the budget?
Yes.
That's good.
Um, absolutely. Whereas, I think it's. Absolutely, yeah, it was last year, it was eighty two thousand five hundred, and she's proposing thirty five thousand.
Okay. Great.
Which I think is, you know, so that, that's a huge reduction.
Yep. And it'll help make up for the increase we just put in the window.
Did we have any other questions about the ambulance part though?
No, I.
No.
I didn't have any issues with it, I think it's. It looks good to me. Much less than the fire department.
Next year.
Boats, planes, ambulances.
Anything else on the budget? I think by next time, we should be able to sign off on it. Completely. That fair? Okay.
That's a yes.
Okay. Um, then we'll move on to eleven, reporter town manager.
Um, I also wanted to talk about a, a opportunity for a grant. Uh, also a collaboration with, uh, North Haven. And this is just at the early stages, all I'm looking for is, uh. You know, the nod to just continue. Um, we're looking at the two communities jointly applying for a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. For our, um, sea level rise committee here and the North Haven Climate Working Group. Uh, to work on, uh, resiliency proj- projects. Like community education, freshwater protection, hazard mitigation and energy sustainability, again, we're just in the very early stages. Of applying for this grant, and it would be a, a grant to hire a planner. Uh, to help us with these, uh, projects and apply for other grants, for instance. Is it alright if I continue with that?
Yes. Unless anyone objects. Okay.
The transfer station project is moving along, uh, the design of the wall has been changed to better accommodate trucks. That will likely be backing up into that space. And emptying the load, but it is going to be an additional cost of six thousand, uh, four hundred. But, um. And we're gonna be tracking these changes, but I guess the good news is that there is. We've gotten our first official change order, which will actually reduce the cost of the project. Because, uh, with conversations with Fox Island Electric and Headstrom, who is the electrician for the project. That we don't need to upgrade the electrical panel to the four hundred and eighty volt. So that will remove a significant amount, uh, from the budget. And about, I finalized, uh, the loan documents for the money to pay for the transfer station. So that's all set to go, uh, so we're ready financially. Um, if you wanted to look, you know, this is the new design. You know, there's only a small section here that, that shows, I mean, it's not really. Visually much different, I mean, the configuration is the same, it's just that the height, like the wall. Will be a little bit higher to make it, um, better. A better situation. Uh, you know, I mean, the trucks come in with a load of shingles. Uh, they need to be able to back up into that demo trailer and, and dump that load. Uh, so what we're doing will make that easier.
So this is a redesign for the. Containers coming in, it's for people.
For dumping.
Yeah, the, the people that are bringing.
Do with the height of the wall, so we need more gravel, the, the increase in cost is really. An increased amount in gravel. Or road ma- or material, you know.
Yeah, that was a question.
Sorry, there.
Good quick question, uh, the plan over there shows the swap shop. Sweet, shrinking back down to a, uh. A container. A container.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, that was sort of a option. We don't really know what we're gonna do with this, I don't know, I, in my opinion, we don't know what we're gonna do with this.
I wouldn't think it could go back up to the transfer station after being. And the location is now.
I wouldn't think so either.
I mean, it's a much bigger space now, and it's doing pretty well, so. We're gonna have to factor that into. What happens with that building as well.
So, depending on how it goes, it might free up some space there for whatever.
Yeah.
They're working on.
Yep.
Yeah, in my experience, there's always a lot of changes like that during construction.
Okay.
You know. It'll be worked out at some point.
Yeah, I mean, once you rip stuff apart, you never know what you're gonna find behind it, so.
Yeah. Um, do you want me to?
Yep, go ahead.
I just wanted you to know that I've been, we hired a new IT person, Gus, Gusco Consulting there in Rockland. Been very happy with them, but we've done quite a bit of work, I did order two new desktops, one for Travis and. One for Debbie, Debbie's never really liked the configuration with the laptop, and I just want her to be more comfortable with her workspace. Travis needs, I need a computer. At his desk that he can log into, because he's one of the employees that, um, works remotely sometimes. So, um. But we have a, a reserve fund, if, I'm hoping to just put it in the operating, uh, budget for this year. But if it goes over, we do have that, uh, equipment reserve that we could tap into. All of the old, uh, computers and the equipment, I don't know if you were ever upstairs, but there was an inordinate amount of old equipment up there and, uh. Took out all the hard drives and, um, took that over to the transfer station, so. That's all gone, and Ken has already had North Coast come and pick up all of the electronic and television, so that's. Uh, already gone, um, our. Insurance company, Maine Municipal Risk Management, requires us to implement a multi-factor authentication. To, on remote users, so the only one we have now is Travis, so, um. We're in the end stages of implementing that, so we'll be in compliance with our insurance company. And then, you know, I, I feel like Gusco has been very good at, um. Helping us with a lot of, you know, small issues, I mean, we've. Um, we've corrected problems that different employees have had, I don't, I don't even know, I mean, so many. People have issues and we don't know how to deal with it, and they've been able to come in and really just pump out, you know, um. You know, focus on the different employees and what their problems have been, and solve a multitude of problems for us. Uh, so it, they've been really great. So I'm really happy with that company. And my last report is that we're, we're, we're working on the June thirtieth, twenty twenty two audit, sending materials, Debbie sent what she can send. Uh, to them, they're doing the audit remotely. And, um, I'm in the process of sending all of the special revenue fund and capital project information to them, so that's, that'll be ongoing for a bit. So, lots going on.
Per usual, right?
Yeah.
Move on to reporter members then. You sure?
Yeah.
You look like you've got something to say.
Still waiting for my light bulbs down there. Fun, fun lights, whatever they call.
Um. Anything else, anyone? Alright, I move you, Jared. All is a bit. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks a lot, thanks, Ryan, you're doing a great job.
Yes. Don't let North Haven try to.
Yeah.